Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you both. Good to see everybody. There's four of us here.
And there's three on the phone.
And there are three on the phone. Andrew, Director Scott is on the phone. Director from Edwards is on the phone. And Director Constanor on the phone. And I'm going to introduce Kate Wilkinson, who will be facilitating tonight. We're introducing our guests tonight to go over ethics and public meetings, protocols, rules, practices.
Thank you, Chair de Fass. I'm Kate Wilkinson. I am the Assistant General Counsel for the District. Excited to be here tonight and to welcome Attorney Randy Geller. Randy is at the Harang Long Firm and has been practicing law for approximately 29 years. Almost all of that exclusively focused on educational institutions, including all manner of discrimination and large general governments. And we're thrilled to have him join us tonight for some ethics training. Randy, please.
All right. Thank you for having me. As Kate said, I'm Randy Geller. I'm a shareholder with Harang Long, Gary Redneck. And I've been working with the District for about five years now. And it's an honor to work with a client like Portland Public Schools. It's a terrific client. This is your annual training, as I understand it, on public records, public meetings, and ethics. And I'm not sure we'll have time, but I may touch upon in your slides, do touch upon the attorney-client privilege as well. These are the topics that Liz Larr Jaskby to cover. We're not obviously going to cover the full breadth of all of those topics. We're going to sort of focus in on some critical issues for you as directors in relation to those laws. It also should be somewhat helpful to your senior staff as well, because many of the same issues and rules arise for them as they do for board members. So I'm not exactly sure how you have the slides or if you have the slides. So I will just...
Are they on board books for this thing?
They are on board books. Unfortunately, we were not able to get that through. You can call along.
So I will try to use my notes to tell you which slide we are on.
Can we just switch spots here? So I think they're having a hard time hearing you.
No one ever says that to me.
And we switch spots. The first act of that meeting is?
No one ever says that, says that you can't hear me either.
And you can beat me, because I left my name tag there.
All right. It's an honor. How is that?
That's great. Thank you, Randy.
You bet. So now we're on Slide 2. And this is the scope of the presentation. As I said, this is not going to be comprehensive. It will cover some discrete issues under the public records law and the public meetings law. And on Slide 3, the government ethics law and the attorney-client privilege, if we have time. Slide 4. So the public records law. As probably all of you know, all state and local government bodies in Oregon are subject to the public records law, and that includes PPS. The purpose of the public records law is to provide for open government, to make government records accessible to members of the public, with the notion being that that improves the functioning of government. The definition of public record is very broad and essentially covers every written record relating to the conduct of the public's business that is prepared, owned, used, or retained by a public body, regardless of physical form or characteristics. But to parse that definition, it's a very, very broad definition. It's designed to cover every written record. So emails, text messages, spreadsheets, drafts. People often think drafts are not covered, but they are. Letters, handwritten notes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There are, however, many exemptions from disclosure. And those exist where the legislature has determined that there's a reason to keep certain kinds of records confidential. Next, I'll talk about some issues that arise under the public records law. And we'll go to Slide 5.
May I ask a quick question about what types of records are kept confidential? Besides...
So for the District, the classic example is student records. Student records are made confidential under a federal law and under state law as well. So that's a real big subset of records that are confidential under both state and federal law. Some personnel records are confidential. Some records that are private, personally private, like medical records tend to be confidential. Those are some of the big ones that PPS deals with. So Slide 5 is the next slide. And this is an issue of importance to board members and employees as they kind of order their daily business. And that is an email on a privately-owned computer or smartphone or in a personal email account of public record. And the questions that you have to ask with respect to each record are: Does the record relate to the conduct of the public's business? And is the record prepared, owned, used, or retained by a public body, by PPS or somebody acting on behalf of PPS, like a board member or an employee? The point of this question is that the location of the record doesn't necessarily determine whether it's a public record or not. So you use your personal Gmail account. That does not make the record a non-public record. The record could still be public. There are some other reasons why this matters. The District may need to search your personal computer or your smartphone to find public records or in the course of discovery in litigation. Or you may be asked to do that kind of search in order for the District to respond to a public records request. Slide 6. So with all that I've said in mind here, some kind of general, high-level lessons for both board members and employees in the public sector in Oregon. The best practice is, to the extent possible, separate your private and public business. That way, the District doesn't have to get into your private business, and neither does anyone else. So it's good to separate that to the extent that you can. And the corollaries are: Avoid using your personal email account for PPS business. And avoid using your PPS email account for personal business. And then, of course, the last thing that I always like to say is be careful about what you put in emails. Emails and increasingly text messages are risked for the news media and members of the public. They think they're discovering something illicit by asking for emails or text messages. And realize that everything you write down could appear on the front... I used to say the front page of the Oregonian. Now I'll say the homepage of the Oregonian. And as someone who's had his records on the front page of newspapers, when I worked in the public sector, it's no fun. It's a good thing to avoid if you can. Slide number 7. Next, we're going to get into the public meetings law. And the public meetings law is kind of a corollary to the public records law, the notion being that government ought to be accessible and open to members of the public. The public meetings law requires essentially two things. First is the obvious one, that meetings are open to the public. And the second is a little less obvious, but equally important in that is the public body must notify the public of the time and location of the meeting to enable a member of the public to attend if he or she wants to. The public meetings law doesn't apply to every meeting. It applies to meetings of a quorum of a governing body of a public body. So there has to be a quorum present, which in the case of the PPS Board is four. And in the case of board committees, it could be four, or it could be more, or it could be less than four. And board committees can also be subject to the public meetings law in addition to board meetings themselves. So it's important, as you think about, and mostly your staff, to think about these meetings, about whether they need to be properly noticed to the public and the news media and in a location where the public can attend.
May I ask also, would that hold true for, say, a task force or an ad hoc committee?
It depends on what the charge of the task force or ad hoc committee is. But it is possible that meetings of task forces or ad hoc committees might be public meetings.
If the conditions of the quorum are met?
If there's a quorum and if there... I don't want to get too far down in the weeds here, but there's a question about whether the task force could make a decision for the public body or make a recommendation to a governing body. Those are sort of factors to consider in whether those sorts of committees would be subject to the public meetings law. What I would suggest is, if you have questions, you know, ask Roseanne and ask your legal counsel if you have questions about particular committees or task forces. So one last comment on the public meetings law. As probably you are all aware, there have been a lot of changes to how meetings are conducted as a result of the pandemic. You've generally been... This Board has generally been good about publicly broadcasting meetings in the past. That's going to be a requirement starting January 1st. Legislature passed a law this past session that requires governing bodies to livestream their meetings and to take public comments electronically if they are accepting comments in person. So a meeting like this will have to be livestreamed. And for a lot of districts, that's a brave new world. For you, that's probably something you're already used to. Slide number 8. Serial communications. So this is kind of a new area of the public meetings law that arose because of a decision of the Oregon Court of Appeals about five years ago. And the notion is that a serial communication is a series of emails or text messages or verbal communications between board members. So Board Member A sends an email to Board Member B, and so on and so forth. And you've assumed you've got seven board members on an email string. And the question is, is that somehow a public meeting that should have been properly noticed, even though it occurred by email? And there's no hard and fast rule from the Oregon courts or from the legislature yet. But it's important that you're cognizant of the risk of communicating as a quorum by email and the risk that somebody could say that you've been deliberating towards a decision by an email or text message. I'm not going to tell you to stop communicating by email or text message. Obviously, that's an important way of communicating. You should just have in the back of your mind that if there are multiple communications involving a sufficient number of board members so that you have a quorum of the Board, a red light should go off. That maybe this is a good idea. You should talk to legal counsel about whether you should continue the conversation. I'm used to looking my finger to turn the page. Having done a presentation in person for almost 19 months, I think I did one in February of 2020, so it's a very strange time to do this. So social gatherings is another important topic. And purely social gatherings of the members of a governing body are not covered by the public meetings law. And the theory is that there is no discussion or deliberation with respect to official business of the Board. Now, that's easier said than done when you all get together in a social gathering, because you all have in common the fact that you're a director of Portland Public Schools. It's important when you're at a social gathering to avoid talking about business of the Board and maintain it as strictly a social gathering. The public often misperceives social gatherings as involving public business. So keeping on the straight and narrow when you're in a social gathering with your fellow board members is best practice. And then Slide 10 finally is just some brief words to the wise about executive sessions. What is discussed in an executive session is confidential and should be maintained as such. The reality is that you're probably going to talk to somebody about what occurs in an executive session. And if you do that, you should talk with another member of the Board who was present or with an employee who was present in the executive session. You should not talk about executive session material to people who are not present in the executive session. There's some complicated legal reasons for that, but suffice to say, that's a good practice to try to maintain. Of course, when you talk about executive session item outside of executive session, the same rules about the public meetings law still apply. So next, we're going to shift to the government ethics law. And this will be Slide 11. The government ethics law applies to elected officials, to public employees, and interestingly, also to volunteers. That last application to volunteers is somewhat controversial, but that's the rule. And if you were to ask most volunteers whether they're subject to the government ethics law, the answer would be what? The government ethics law can also touch your family members, your relatives, members of your household, and a business with which you are associated. This is a law that's administered by the Government Ethics Commission. It's a very complicated law that makes some very fine distinctions. And it is a good idea to consult with legal counsel or someone who's an expert in the ethics law if you have questions. So reach out and ask if you have a question. Next, I'm going to turn to Slide 12 and talk about some topics of interest under the government ethics law. The first topic is conflicts of interest. There are two types of conflicts of interest in Oregon. Fairly obvious, there's a potential conflict of interest, and then there's an actual conflict of interest. And they're just slightly different. There's a key word that is used in these definitions that distinguish between a potential conflict and an actual conflict. And I'm going to read to you the fairly arcane definition of a potential conflict of interest. And I don't expect you to follow along necessarily word-for-word with this, but it'll give you a sense of the complexity of the definition. So a potential conflict of interest is any action or any decision or recommendation by a person acting in a capacity as a public official, the effect of which could be to the private, pecuniary benefit or detriment of the person, of the public official, or the public official's relative or a business with which the public official or the public official's relative is associated. So that's a fairly complicated definition. Basically, what it means is a decision that you might make could benefit somebody like yourself or a relative. Then there's the definition of an actual conflict. And it's essentially the same as a potential conflict, except with an actual conflict, the decision would benefit the person or the public official or the relative or the business. So could versus would. And here are a couple of examples that'll help you, I think, understand the distinction between a potential conflict of interest and an actual conflict of interest. So first, we'll talk about an example of a potential conflict of interest. A school district has decided to construct a new elementary school. And the school board is at the stage of developing criteria for the construction bid process. A recently-elected school board member's son owns a construction company in town. The school board member would be met with a potential conflict of interest when participating in official actions to develop the bid criteria, because the official actions could financially impact the son's construction. So that's a potential. You're developing a bid package. It may be that the construction company will want to bid on the project. Or it may not, but it's a potential conflict of interest. So an actual conflict of interest, using kind of the same fact pattern, is a school district is soliciting bids for the construction of a new elementary school. The bid deadline was last week, and the superintendent has notified the school board that there are four qualified bids. And the school board will be awarding the bid to one of the four bidders at their upcoming meeting. One of the qualified bids was submitted by the construction company owned by the school board member's son. So in this fact pattern, the school board is actually making a decision on whether or not to award the bid, award the project, to a contracting firm, one of which could be the son's construction firm. And so that is an actual conflict of interest for the board member. So what happens if there's a potential or actual conflict of interest and you're a board member? So elected officials are supposed to publicly announce the nature of the conflict of interest before participating in any allowable official action on the issue giving rise to the conflict. Usually, the announcement has to be made in a public meeting. And then if it's an actual conflict, the board member has to refrain from participating in the decision. With a potential conflict, the board member can still participate. But with an actual conflict, the board member has to cease participating in the decision. So I think we're now going to Slide 14, where we're going to talk briefly about gifts. Gifts is a big topic. There's a lot of law on gifts to public officials. A gift under the government ethics law is something of economic value provided to the public official but not offered to others who aren't public officials on the same terms and conditions. So here are a couple of examples. The first one is a gift. The second one is not a gift. So not a gift... I'm sorry, is a gift. First one is a gift. At a conference exclusively for school board members, a board member buys a raffle ticket and wins a big screen television. The television is a gift because the value of the television exceeds the cost of the raffle ticket. And the opportunity to enter the raffle and win the television was not available to members of the general public on the same terms and conditions. So you go to... I mean, I know I've gone to conferences where they have raffles, and you might win something, not something you would ordinarily think of as a gift. Well, in Oregon, it can be a gift. So an example of not a gift. Outside of a grocery store, a school board member buys a raffle ticket from a local scout troop and wins a big screen television. The television is not a gift because the opportunity to enter the raffle and win the television was available to members of the general public on the same terms and conditions. So the difference is the conference that's exclusively for school board members versus a raffle ticket that any member of the public could conceivably buy.
Goodbye.
Bye to you as well. You couldn't take it no more.
So Slide 15. Here's another gift-related rule. The gift limit is $50 per calendar year from any one source. So even if a gift is a gift, if it's less than $50, you can accept it. If the source of the gift has no economic interest in matters subject to a public official's decision-making, the gift limit of $50 does not apply. But if the source of the gift has an economic interest in matters subject to the public official's decision-making, the gift limit does apply. So the question that you have to ask yourself is, does the source have some kind of economic interest in a decision that I might make? So with the school board, with this construction bid package example, let's take the fact that it's a relative out of the equation. A gift from a general contractor, when you're going to make a decision about awarding a contract for the renovation of a school, that's going to... The general contractor's going to have an economic interest in the decision that you make. And you should definitely avoid gifts from a contractor like that.
What about schools we go to give us a T-shirt?
No, that's a gift from the District. And those are not covered by the gift rules.
So I can take all the rules of the Franklin Gary?
You can take all the Roosevelt and Franklin Gary?
And it will accumulate like you can't believe.
I've stored it out there.
Swag, swag war.
Yeah, swag is a... I used to be the General Counsel of the University of Oregon. And swag was a big deal. So we didn't like the appearance of receiving a lot of gifts from the athletic department, but nevertheless, they would bring around a bag every fall. It would have all sorts of interesting things. Often, things that were not actually ever going to be sold. So some unusual things. So I had, like, one slipper, for example. Like a sample slipper.
Gee, thanks.
Not worth $50. Not worth $50. And not something anybody would really want, especially with big feet like mine. So I think Roseanne was going to distribute a flow chart from the Government Ethics Commission about gift exceptions. If she hasn't... I know she hasn't. I'm sure she will. There are... There's a laundry list of exceptions to the gift rules. Too much to go into here. It's a useful chart to have just to get you thinking about the exceptions to the gift rules. So given our time constraints, I think I am going to skip the discussion of use of position for financial benefit, because that's also pretty arcane. Note the general rule that the law prohibits every public official from using or attempting to use their position to obtain a financial benefit if the opportunity for the financial benefit would not otherwise be available but for the position held by the public official. So I'm going to skip to Slide 20, which is the attorney-client privilege. I know that a number of you have experienced the attorney-client privilege. And what that is, is... is, is that confidential communications made for the purpose of providing legal services between a client and a lawyer, or between a lawyer and a client, are confidential, are privileged. They can't be introduced in a court and used as a general rule. And the purpose of the attorney-client privilege is to facilitate candid discussions between a lawyer and the, and the client. You should treat verbal and written communications with the district's lawyers as confidential and not disclose them to third parties. The reason is if you disclose them to third parties, you can, can breach the privilege and cause the privilege to go away, and that can be problematic for the district in litigation in particular. So with that, that's a lot of material in a short amount of time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to respond to them. If not, I appreciate your time and your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It looks like Roseanne did link at the end of the presentation. There are two links. One is public records and meetings, and the other one is the Oregon Government Ethics Law.
If you haven't had enough today, more.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Brad.
It just rang up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.